Let's get our budget work session started. First off, I guess Gary is, we're gonna do the park fund?
Really no big changes, just for the good.
The good?
Yeah. See, if I knew where to find it, there was a loan on one of the zero-turn moors that paid off, so it deducted forty-two-hundred dollars out of the park, because that moor's paid off now. Pretty much everything else stayed the same. There's in landscaping, there's a little bit of an ad for our money we receive to landscape around the radio tower when that's up.
What's the, Gary, I was just gonna ask, what's the skinny on that? What's going on with Radio Tower? Any ideas, Martin?
No, we have an option, and it's up to them to just exercise it sometime in the next three years.
Okay. Thank you.
I know, for my own curiosity, what is the transfer for the general fund? Is it an agreement or?
The revenue, you'll notice, property taxes eighty-two thousand dollars. Our expenditures, a hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred dollars.
So it's just to cover the rest of the expenses?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't mean to beat this to death, but I just have to understand, the Radio Tower, did they give us any funds at all yet, and will they be giving us anything yearly? Just so I, can you refresh my memory on that?
They gave us three thousand dollars.
Was it thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five hundred.
And then with the option, they don't have to give us anything else until they break ground? Okay. Thank you. Just wanna make sure I was clear on that. Thank you, sir. Looks good.
And that thirty-five hundred was for the sign improvements.
Yes.
That you got in here, bud?
Yeah.
Now, do we carry that over year to year?
Where's it at?
That money?
We'll just budget it every year.
Okay. Got you.
Thank you.
Joe Prince is here, everybody. Good to have you, Joe.
Better late than never.
Wow.
Still early for the regular meeting.
Oh, yeah, you're way early for that. Good choice.
What was the major increase in, it wouldn't be this year, it would be the year before, for the employee insurance? Why was that a sixteen-thousand-dollar increase? Just change in plan? It would've been from eighteen into nineteen on five-zero-zero-four.
It was change in plan in employee.
Yeah, we, since it's really not split up, park and street physically wise, we just, certain employees are paid out of certain.
Some out of park, some out of street. Okay. And then that was just a change in plan. Okay. Thank you.
So the revenue from that tower, when we start receiving, and I know we had a, an interest from the park board that that money be theirs, did we make any?
That decision we made by the Board of Alderman in office the year it comes in. And so, it may be a moral commitment, for lack of a better term, but it's up to the Board that will use that budget to decide how that money gets through.
Would be nice to see some significant improvements up there.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's lots of things that could get done, not just there, like Pinkley Park, it would be nice to add some equipment there, but lots of kids in that hood, not much quick.
What are our assessor operations?
That's the fees that we pay the county to collect the taxes.
Okay.
And you'll see that in bands.
Yeah, I noticed that. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the transportation stuff.
Couple significant changes in this one was on the energy loan. Eighty-five oh-six was budgeted the last couple of years, a thirty-four thousand for the payment. This year's the payoff on it, which is only twenty-six hundred, which made the interest change also. I deducted some more out of streetlight electricity, we were about eight thousand dollars higher proposed this year than what we're gonna spend, so I took another five thousand out of that. Should be the major changes. Then in the additions, in line number eighty-four-five is, was adding the backhoe payment, and the skid steer payment is in that also, which is still at eighty-four. Looking on our own page here. And raised that a couple thousand from the last year, just to have anything that arises when we need to purchase any of the equipment. But the two payments coming out of there are twenty-five thousand. In line number sixty-eight oh-five, equipment repair, I have a dump truck that needs a bed replaced, so that was raised eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for a bed.
Solid truck, otherwise.
Yep. So I got like thirty-nine thousand miles on it.
Twenty-five freight lines.
More than newer freight lines. The oldest freight liner, we've already replaced the bed on it. He had equipment repaired.
Gary, on sixty-one oh-one, mosquito chemicals, we haven't actually sprayed in a couple of years.
We throw mosquito biscuits.
Oh, okay.
We treated a lot up around flood areas where there's standing water.
Okay. Did you not have any of those expenses yet this year?
Yeah. Did we just not get the thing yet soon?
I think we just paid them.
Oh, okay.
It'll be, it's, yeah.
So that's not for fogging, that's for other?
Nope, that's for the biscuits.
Okay.
I spent forty-seven hundred and fifty of them.
Oh, really? Okay. Thank you. Are you guys getting stuff from the health department? They're providing you some supplies?
One morning we could wish.
So it's all provided as well as insect, aside of the whites, those sprayed, keep it in, you know, out on the counter, people pick them up when they come in, it's a good service.
Chemicals.
Sixty-one hundred, yeah.
Chemicals is all.
Oh.
Yeah, that's gonna be my question.
No, we use Offspring Store, which is animal friendly, so everything runs to a creek. Supposed to be. And that's for earthfish or the frogs either. Yep. We've been using it four or five years.
So, well, we kind of appreciate this, nobody can hear what you're talking about.
Sorry.
Chemicals.
Chemicals.
Frog and fish safe.
Is this something you think the viewing audience might wanna hear?
Well, I don't know. Maybe. Because I asked if it was glycosafe, and he said no. You hear it on TV quite often now about that, you know, so.
Yeah, all the weed killer we use is environmental friendly, since everything runs to a creek, it's no harm to fish and the frogs or anything, so.
On the, on line item sixty-one oh-three, which is asphalt-related materials, I'd noticed that back in 2016, we used about thirty K, thirty, thirty thousand, and since we haven't really touched it, and it doesn't look like if we're gonna touch it this year, do we still think it's necessary to budget thirty thousand for that, or?
Well, we, there's several thousand in the outstanding, and then in the fall, I purchased two or three pallets of bag asphalt for the winter, so we'll.
They don't end up coming close to it this year?
I don't know about close, but we're gonna, we'll eat a good chunk of it, yeah.
You make a lot of your repairs of concrete now, right?
No, we're going back to asphalt.
Are you?
This winter, there were several spots, northward especially, the concrete and asphalt expanded, contracted at a different rate, and it did a lot of damage to the asphalt, so.
So all these patches around town, then, you're gonna do asphalt?
Yeah.
Where the water company stored all of?
If we're patching asphalt.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, we did a big patch up on Washington, that seemed to be pretty good.
One you did with Leighton's real good.
Yeah, I've been getting, with the patching, I've been getting some compliments from people, you know, noticing that that's really helped.
Yeah, he's been doing.
Joe, you got something to say?
No.
You know, doing it with that skid steer.
Right, no, we know that this patching needs to be done over your subdivision, but you don't get near, you don't get out enough to seal.
Doesn't cut that corner there.
Yeah.
He needs to worry more about mowed out with their ditch.
That's true.
That is true.
Well, Joe, you can take a shovel down there and open it.
That's what I had to do, I was trying to get him to come down.
Yeah.
What's happening?
Holding a light?
He was there standing watching.
Somebody has to supervise. Gary, you got anything else?
Me?
No, it was Gary. You okay?
I'm good. For once, right?
Next on the agenda then, is the judicial department.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, sir. Cheer for us. Love.
Is that Eric?
I thought it was Jeremy behind me, but it's Mark.
Close enough.
It's Mark, Ed.
Judicial, this be Joe Prince.
Yeah. You obviously noticed the absence of things being budgeted for personnel.
What are the seventy-two oh-one, the court expenses?
That's the money we threw in there that they're gonna charge us.
Court administration, we think there's gonna be a charge for administration.
So that hasn't been?
I haven't approached.
We're not sure what that's gonna be yet. Okay.
How about infrastructure? What does that mean?
There's nothing there.
Right. Oh.
It's not gonna be in this building anymore.
I circled the wrong one. Thanks.
What was that for this year?
That's what we paid for seed bacon, the design of the building.
Architecture for the re-design of the.
Oh, okay. All right.
And are we pretty confident that seventy-thirty is not gonna change?
It did change.
No, I mean from, from this, I know there was still some question.
We agreed on a dollar amount per hour for the clerical, additional clerical assistance. We don't know what it's gonna be, so we just budgeted a figure that we thought was conservative.
The twenty-five hundred is our dues to CMO Regional Planning, every local government that participates pays an annual dues, that's our annual dues. Chamber payment is what we always pay to the chamber.
So, is that our membership fee?
No, it's a economic development fee, and they don't, you know.
What do we get for that?
That's what exactly I was gonna ask. Thank you.
That's what I thought.
The last time the chamber came before us, Mike Power was the president of the chamber, and his point was that the Chamber of Commerce, generally chambers of commerce are where businesses that may be interested in community go first, and, and the chamber then is providing economic development services by maintaining data and making referrals, working, working with Sandra. That also the Chuck Puchin, how soon?
It was.
Could not anymore? Who's doing the, who's the website?
She, I think it's coming out with Sanders.
They send that right out. We can't hear you. We can't hear what's going on.
Can't hear you?
Because we don't know what we're talking about.
We don't. Right now, they have nothing to say, right now, it's, we're here, trying to figure some things out.
Is there some way we could ask the, I mean, is it just we cut the chamber check for six thousand dollars? Can we have them come in and let us know what that money's gonna do before we approve this?
We have, we have a couple times in the past, I remember the same conversation a couple times, yeah.
I would, I would like for them to come in and try to persuade me into.
But I mean, it jumped from one year of ninety-six hundred dollars down to four thousand, and then to six thousand, I mean.
Well, the ninety-six, that's when we were paying Chuck Houchen for the tourism.
He was maintaining the, visiting St. Genevieve website.
Which is now.
And the money went to the chamber, and they paid him, because he was, had multiple contracts, so.
So we're not mandated to that amount by any?
Nope. We pay a membership, the regular membership fee based on our employment, like any other member.
That's how the administration fund, right?
Comes out of legislative.
Or legislative, that's right, I'm sorry, that's right.
So we can have them visit us and tell us?
At our next meeting, I will ask someone to grace us with their presence.
Doesn't the county match that amount, or?
No, that's the, that's, that's the contribution. County, it's a payment to us for economic development services that Sandra provides.
Right, okay.
But I don't know the county's relationship with the chamber.
Supplyability for one thing, I don't know what they do about utilities in that regard.
Activity to that.
Yeah.
Governmental grant fund, it's just, if you get a grant, goes in there.
Right.
So we keep the account open.
Martin, you're the, you're our primary and our sole grant writer, is that right, or my?
Sandra writes.
Sandra writes, Sandra and you? The reason I'm asking that is because I'm just thinking down the road with Sandra and out with the National Park and everything else, we might be able to do. How do we find out about opportunities for grants as a city? Educate me a little bit, because I don't even know, is there, is there a site you go to? Is there a source?
Hundreds of them?
Just like when you're going to college.
Stop what you wanna do and we'll find it, but I will tell you, Davis actually also writes, has written grants, can't write grants, which we can kinda do together, but first of all, most grants are not hundred percent grants, so, you know, for instance, the RSC, land conservation grants, it might be used for parks, but they're fifty percent of whatever you wanna do, and you have to have the other fifty percent, so, you know, if you had the other fifty percent, we'd be doing some of it. The mini grants are targeted, they're, they're certain populations, either low to moderate income, or certain ethnicity, or, and so we don't generally qualify for those kinds of grants. And so, you know, there are hundreds of pages and thousands of grants available, they aren't all suitable for, for us, and the things that we do employ CMO Regional Planning, they have an employee whose sole responsibility is grant administration, and Margaret is quite knowledgeable, there's very little that we don't hear about when it's, when it's available. Or, as with the county's walking bridge, the Cross Progress Parkway, you know, that, that grant was written by CMO Regional Planning for the county, and those services are available, are available to us. I'm not comfortable having somebody else write my grant, because I think success depends on the language, and, and I wanna create my own pitch, you know, so, I'm gonna use their assistance, but we tend to, we tend to offer.
Well, there's a fee when you have somebody writing grant for you, right?
We belong, we pay them twenty-five hundred dollars a year to write those services to us.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, for certain services, we pay more, like mapping services, we pay as we go.
Right.
Now, we're getting to the dedicated funds. You can't spend band money for any of the band, we have an municipal band and board, and they do a wonderful job of providing music. Some of that money gets spent to support music during the name events, like Sure to Fed, French Heritage Festival, and Sandra will have music at the Welcome Center, for instance, and we can use money for that, but it's gotta be spent for music in the city.
And those are given out quarterly, is that correct?
The.
The muni band grants?
Muni band grants, here's the muni band, band expert.
So that's why we're, for the eight-month actual, they still have to, they're still providing money for those. Thank you.
Cemetery fund, likewise, we do charge some of our, we took over glass cutting, you know, there's an allocation for that, and here that you might not have seen in previous years. The thing about cemetery grant, fund, is, you know, it doesn't have to be necessarily in the cemetery, but it has to be in support of the cemetery, so improvement of the, we had a grant for safe routes to school, but we could use the cemetery fund for kind of part of our match, because the part of the sidewalk we were improving was at the cemetery, so you can, you can do that, that kind of thing, but generally speaking, it's all gotta go into the cemetery maintenance and improvements.
So that, what's showing salaries on the five thousand, that's to cut the grass and?
That's the allocation of the.
Then we used to do contract.
Yes, that's what. And I will say, since we faked it open, we get very few calls about the cemetery.
And it used to be constant.
Kudos to Gary.
It used to be, it used to be constant.
And emotional.
Yes.
Yeah.
It is. Special Road is where we parked for the money they gave us for road improvements, we've been sitting there for several years, we will use it up this year with Chadwell Lane.
There you go.
And maybe somebody can call them in to give us. Do I need you to claim the downtown zip, anybody?
I don't know.
Could you go through the whole process for me?
We have to get that attorney back.
At a later date.
And now we're getting into the confusing funds.
Sue'll take care of that levy fund, she's well versed in talent.
Well, there's no, there's no obligation for us to maintain these funds under the titles that they were given years ago, so Sue and I have talked about it, and we would like to propose this coming year is combining the ones that can be combined, for instance, the levy fund and the capital improvement fund can, can be one, and then we'll stop asking the question of which is which, because it's, you can do the same work out of either fund, it's just, it just was established as a levy fund, you all know the history of that, reserving the match, the core, we notified the core, they're writing us out, and, so there's no reason to maintain these separate funds, so we're proposing combine it and call it a capital improvement fund.
Don't put it together, I'm bringing this sheet to you.
I have my eyes on you. Mayor, are we gonna record that levy meeting Monday? Is that levy, will it be recorded Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, Suzie, oh, televised, don't mind, very well.
All you do this.
So, under the audit, seventy-thirty-five, if we combine, does that go away then?
That'll be a portion of the audit. We take the audit out of, almost all the amounts. It's not in the capital fund.
Right.
There was never, yeah, so, there was never.
Where we, where we at now, Mark?
So we're still, unless you have questions about the capital improvement or the levy fund, I mean, there's not much to talk about.
Okay, so now we're.
Debt fund?
Debt service fund?
Not much you can do with that.
No. You had a revised general fund?
Yes. Had some tough ones.
General fund, this reflects everything you've already looked at on one sheet.
Well, this is like the revenue is on page three of the general fund, and then at the bottom of page four is all of the expenses that come out of, all the department expenses that come out of the general fund.
No, it's in here.
So, so if we take the difference between those two is, is what?
The difference between what?
The expenses and the income?
Is the amount of, the money that will go into the cash, the reserve.
Right, okay, that's what I was gonna, yeah.
I wasn't about to say something wrong, so I decided not to say anything. The words were coming out, I didn't realize that.
So the big difference was the judicial portion.
Indeed.
And our rent proceeds, little bit of a change there.
Right.
What did you say, Susie, I'm sorry?
The, the rent proceeds, forty-one ten.
What, what about the rent proceeds?
Just that that's a big change.
Oh, big change, yeah.
So, um, when it comes to our revenues, basically our subtotal revenue.
We have a private conversation going on.
Yes, I'll wait, I will wait.
They were asking about that, that rent.
Well, just until October of next year.
Of twenty? I thought you meant this year, that's why I took it out.
Yeah, October first this year.
Okay. Having a contract right there.
Really?
Oh, yeah, surprise. It's not a problem, he sent it to me, I thought he was gonna sign it, you know, and, and then he sent it to me, and I, Mark looked at it and I looked at it, and I said, well, I looked at it, and I called Mark and said, have you looked at this thing yet? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I got, and so he's got some revised changes, so I sent it back to him yesterday, and we're still working.
Oh. Am I allowed?
Yes.
So, after the transfer to, transfer to park fund under subtotal revenues, so basically we're bringing in one point nine, uh, or expecting to bring in one point nine. And then after all of our expenses, or our expenditures, we're sitting at two point one, basically two point two, do we, with being in the rent there, plan on tapping into emergency funds, or am I mismathing here, or?
It comes out of the emergency fund balance.
So, the, the, the negative, I guess, almost three hundred thousand will be coming out of an emergency fund?
Yes.
So since we're, we're not gonna have our rent proceeds, but we are, can I talk about this in open session?
Depends on what you're gonna say.
Well, I'm just wondering where the other money's gonna go?
Pardon me?
Where's the other money gonna go, we're not getting money, we're not getting rent proceeds any longer?
Are you talking like the revenue coming from it?
Yeah.
From the sale?
Oh, that goes to the general fund.
Where?
You don't have, you don't have that accounted for.
I do not.
Yeah, that's, that's six hundred thousand dollars, it's not in there yet.
Where, where will that go?
Coming from revenue in the general fund?
Yes.
That'll be, I mean, don't we have stuff like forty-two ten is where it'll end up going under.
Thank you, so that'll be another?
Six hundred thousand.
And what was that number?
So that'll put us three hundred thousand to the.
It was negative, in the red, three hundred.
So now we'll be.
So we'll be much better off.
For two years.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, my, one concern, don't we have some of that revenue expected from the rent of that money, supposed to be put back for things such as the fire department getting a certain amount of it? An agreement with the fire department a few years back?
The equipment fund, that twenty thousand a year?
Oh, yeah.
That we just, there, Mark.
Was it twenty thousand a year?
Yes.
So, will that, it's in there, that will be?
In the fire department.
It's under the CD.
Okay.
It is not in there. It should go up to sixty.
Where at?
Under the CD, the fire apparatus, that forty thousand one ninety-eight should actually be sixty. I didn't include adding to it next year for whatever reason. I didn't put the sale of assets in there because I didn't know we could talk about that either, but do we need to, or like change that before it's actually approved to show that in?
No, until it gets approved, I'm.
We're not working.
Don't change it.
With that amount of, of the fire apparatus, we can change that at any time. Do, do we expect to put into that at the end of the year, and the fire apparatus, or how come there's, there's no eight month actual on that yet?
Because we haven't spent anything.
We, well, we haven't moved it yet, we usually do that like in September.
Okay.
And that leaves the water and sewer, and uh, Steve's out of town, uh, so we're gonna defer action on that till he's here. Again, water and sewer, his money can't be spent for anything other than water and sewer, but he's got a capital expenditure in there that he won't discuss with me, it's different from what's been before, so.
Okay.
We're gonna wait until he's here, let's discuss it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Gives you eight minutes. For a break.
In my age, I need a break. He was more too.
Thank you, Martin, appreciate it.
When are we gonna hear something from Donzy?